Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to read the announcement of the elections from April 27, 2011. Three-year term candidates: Phyllis Batko, 1,661; Pasquale Lembro, 1,416; Michael McEnam, 1,496; Beth De Pinto, 1,612. Budget question: Yes, 1,425; No, 1,407. Thank you to all those that voted for the party. Congratulations to all the members of the Board of Education that won their election. Reading of the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics for Board members. And if anybody wishes to have copies, I have some extras. It's not like I'm not additional. One, I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Two, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my board actions of policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Four, I will carry out my responsibilities not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. Five, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the board. Six, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests of partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seven, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. Nine, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. Ten, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Just one note, there was some legislation before the governor that went back for revisions to the Code of Ethics, which I do not know whether it will change what we have to do at some point in time, but if they do, we may have to ask for that reading. It was told that it was on the desk, and he sent it back to Senate at that point. So there may be some revisions at that point in time.
Is this the criminal background check legislation?
I'm not sure. I believe that was part of it, but there was things that went back and forth through my association the last few days. So there was something that was going to be revised, but then they pulled it back. So I'm just making that note.
So the legislature is writing ethics regulations.
I guess that's a good way to put it.
That's interesting.
What we'll do at this point in time is we'll move to the podium, and we'll do the swearing in the newly-elected board members. We will do everyone in alphabetical order. If you have a family or friend member that you wish to have up at the podium with you as you're sworn in, please invite them up. Obviously, if they'd like to take pictures, we'll wait a moment and allow the pictures to be taken. But we'll start with Mrs. Batko.
I, Phyllis Batko, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Phyllis Batko, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I also affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mrs. Beth De Pinto?
I, Beth De Pinto, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Beth De Pinto, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I also affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
Congratulations. And Mr. Michael McEnam.
I, Michael J. McEnam, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Michael J. McEnam, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. I also affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1.
At this point, we'll take roll call. Mr. Batko.
Here.
Mrs. Batko.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno Ruculia.
Here.
Mr. Syed.
Here.
Mrs. De Pinto.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mrs. Crapp.
Here.
And Mr. McEnam.
President.
At this moment, we're going to take nominations for the office of President. Do I have a motion to nominate someone for the office of President?
I nominate Phyllis Batko for President.
I second.
And that was second by you, Dan? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
And a second? At this time, we're going to take the roll call for nomination for Mrs. Phyllis Batko as President. Mr. Batko.
Yes.
Mrs. Batko.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ruculia.
Yes.
Mr. Syed.
No.
Mrs. De Pinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp.
Yes.
And Mr. McEnam.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Batko. I guess you can move on over to the center, and we'll do nominations for the Vice President.
I'd just like to thank the Board for their vote of confidence in electing me President, and I would like to open it to nominations for the office of Vice President.
I make a motion to nominate Michael McEnam as Vice President.
Any other nomination?
Close the nominations?
Close the nominations.
First and second to close. Second, please.
Second.
Roll call for Vice President, Mr. Michael McEnam. Mr. Batko.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ruculia.
Yes.
Mr. Syed.
Yes.
Mrs. De Pinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp.
Yes.
Mr. McEnam.
Sure.
And Mrs. Batko.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Batko, you can start with Agenda Number Nine, and in the past, the board has usually approved Nine through Twenty for the reorganization.
Is there any questions on Pages Nine through Twenty?
On Number Thirteen. When Carla retires, does she retire from the position also too, or is it?
Yes, if someone at that point in time, they would be appointed.
On Number Fifteen, I would like to go out for RFP for the attorneys and follow the process the way it should have been intended the original time where we approve as a board, going out for RFP, we advertise for bids, we look at the bids as a board, we interview as a board several candidates, and then make the correct choice. So I'll be voting No on that one. Nothing against the short signing firm, but I just believe that we should follow a correct process, and the last times, the last process we utilized left a lot to be dissected.
When you made that motion last reorganization?
Why did? Because I was happy with, if you recall, I was happy with the lens firm. And I just indicated it's nothing against the short signing firm, it's simply a problem with the process that we utilized in changing. So if we're going to go out for RFPs, I think that we should go out for RFPs and do it the correct way.
But the process is not different now than what it was last reorganization, that's my point.
The difference is, we changed attorneys and did not follow a good process in doing it.
In your opinion?
Excuse me, in mine as well, I agree. No, I'm happy so far, but I think that our process was flawed, and I think that we should go out, if we're looking to change attorneys like we do for everything else, even though we don't have to, we should go out and interview several candidates, not just approve one.
But didn't we already go through this, or was this before?
No.
Did we not go for RFPs when we hired this time? Do you mind if I?
Yes, we did.
We did?
Yes, we did.
We did go through the RFP process?
I did put out the RFPs. Yeah, but if you recall, we were informed that we were interviewing the short signing firm. After we were informed we were interviewing them, the RFPs then went out. Before the RFPs closed, we interviewed the short signing firm, and in the following meeting, despite receiving other requests that, or other proposals, we didn't entertain any of them, and we just appointed them. The board didn't even see all of the other proposals. So that's my concern with the process.
Any other comments on these agenda items?
And I agree also that, I had a hard time with swallowing it the last time, and if we're going to do, if we're, we need to be consistent, so if we're going to do it, we're going to do it properly. So I agree to go out.
I have a question on the audit firm. Since we have not seen their work, and we won't be seeing until after tonight, if for some reason we are not satisfied, are we stuck with them for the next audit as well?
I believe you have the clause where you can avoid the contract, that normally within sixty days at that point.
Well, we're simply appointing them for the upcoming school year.
Which includes the audit. They will come back.
So we simply pay them to prepare the state figures in September, October, and if we're not unhappy, we can always?
Yes, you've done that before.
I have one other question on the calendar. Would it be possible, and this is just from experience from prior years, we have a December 6th and a December 20th meeting, would it be possible to just have one in between those two, and if we needed something else to call it, it's always been very hectic at the holidays.
You want, remember, you want, you want to do the 13th? Is that what you prefer to do, rather than have the 6th and the 20th? That's fine.
That's what I like to do.
All right, you want to change that, Mrs. De Angel? If you're ready, now it's the 6th and the 20th, we'll just do one of the 13th, and I agree with Batko, it does get kind of crazy in December. And we'll remove the 6th and the 20th, and we'll just hold to the 13th. Any board have a concern with that? And so it's December 13, no longer the 6th and the 20th.
Any other questions up through Agenda 20, to where you're going to the public? I'd like to open it to the public for any comments on Agenda Item through Agenda 20. Be no comments? Take a motion?
Close.
Close public?
So moved. Is this a, is this a motion to close public, or a motion to approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Batko.
I'm abstaining on Item Number 14, yes on all our others.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ruculia.
No on Number Fifteen, yes on everything else.
I just want to make my notes. Mr. Syed.
No on Fifteen, yes on all the others.
Mrs. De Pinto.
I'm abstaining on Number Fifteen, I feel I have enough knowledge, and yes on everything.
And yes on all others. Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp.
No on Fifteen, and I would like to make sure that I'm clear that I don't have a problem with the firm that we're currently using, I just have a problem with how we got there. So, so no on Fifteen.
And Mr. McEnam.
Yes, but no except.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, Mrs. Batko.
Yes.
I'm so used to you being at the beginning.
Yes.
Sorry. Congratulations, Mrs. Batko.
Thank you.
Good luck. Mr. McEnam, congratulations as well, and Beth, good luck, thank you for joining the board. My report is relatively quick today. No reports for A and B. See, there's a retirement, reinstatement of black seal, and substitutes. Any question, I would say. Moving on.
I see the reinstatements, is that back to the day in which we pulled the stipend, or is that back to the day in which they got the black seal?
That actually, it goes back to the day that their license expired. So when we, when we pulled it, it went back to the day it expired, this reinstates it as of that day.
Okay.
Any other questions? With none moving to D, personnel certified, we have a resignation, and I would like to comment obviously on item Two, Mrs. Sutherland. Her and I have been comrades, friends, colleagues for the last eleven years. I truly will miss her, her guidance, her wisdom, her expertise, as well as her friendship. Carla and I go back to our close-site workdays, we were both born in the same town, our parents worked together, believe it or not, and I will miss her greatly. And she's not really going away, because hopefully she'll come back and help us out, and also be part of the team as she's always been. So Carla, God bless you, and I hope you enjoy your very healthy and happy retirement, which you so deserve. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
I threw out that retirement letter about five times, but unfortunately, did make the report today, so I had to. Okay, number three, unpaid medical leave, there's a few of them, as well as my sitting on the Board of the Commission once again. There is a personnel item here for the teacher that left, which is Tim Ballard, and there are also professional days that are listed as well, on page nine. Ms. Corbino does an absolutely outstanding job as the technical advisor once again, and there is a list of substitutes for teachers. Any questions with that section?
Dr. O'Phan, would you say a comment regarding Item Number Two, which is, I don't know if this is on, I don't know if that's on. Regarding Item Number Two, which is Ms. Sutherland's retirement, we came to the realization at the Hall of Fame Dinner when Ms. Sutherland and I were talking, that the two of us have worked together in some capacity for 22 years, starting with me as a freshman in the high school, where she was my tag teacher, following through to my junior year in high school, when she was my AP1 history teacher, and I did not like history. But one thing that I remember very distinctly about Ms. Sutherland, which she still carries through to today, she was very organized, she had an exact way of doing things, she was structured, and she really ran a very tough classroom, and you learned, you learned. And then following my high school graduation, I joined the board in 1994, and she still remained a history teacher at the high school, and then we moved her on to be an administrative assistant, and I remember feeling somewhat unhappy about promoting her, because I really didn't want to lose her talent in the classroom. But how do you hold someone back who has done well for so many years? But I remember that being a difficult decision, because I really wanted to keep her in the classroom where I felt that she belonged and where she could have the greatest impact. I know we had some discussion due to budget times about that administrative assistant position, but she continued and eventually became middle school principal. I remember the appointment of the superintendent at that time, in which Ms. Sutherland and I had several frank talks, as we could always have, in which she told me like it was, and I told her like it was, and we basically agreed to disagree, and then to the present day, when she is the assistant superintendent. And one thing about Ms. Sutherland through all that time, if I had to pick a word to describe her, aside from dedicated, which we all know, I think the word is fair, and those, that characteristic served her very well as the district's affirmative action officer, because no matter what item you went to see Ms. Sutherland about, there was a good chance you were going to leave and not be happy, but there was also a very good chance that you would leave feeling that you had your say, and you were treated fairly. And I think that is Ms. Sutherland's legacy. You might not always get your way, you might not get what you wanted, but you would leave feeling like you were treated fairly, and that you were heard. Ms. Sutherland, I really want to thank you for all of your years of service to the district as an educator, for being fair, and for being someone that we can count on. I really appreciate it.
And thank you for all you have taught me.
Dr. O'Phan, and Madam President, I have to get used to saying that. I don't have the legacy that Kevin has with Ms. Sutherland, I've only been on the board for six years. For the last five years that I served in the capacity of President, you get to work closer with the administrators and perhaps the other board members. And Ms. Carla Sutherland, I nicknamed her after about the first week of, as I used to call her, the most sagacious woman. And I mean that because she's very wise and very intelligent about a lot of things, and is a woman that has dedicated 40 years of her life, education, think about it, 40 years of her life. I always used her as a sounding board. When I wanted to say something, I let her review some of the things I wanted to write and answers to the letters in the paper, and she always had this uncanny ability to say "that's stupid" without really using those words, and I always respected that, how professional that she always was. And I attended all of the Sable, Wallmore High School, and all my Hall of Fame dinners, and it was always a common thread that whoever was getting up there, and they reminisce about high school, Ms. Carla Sutherland's name would always come up, about their experiences in the classroom, and I think that's the great value about education. You know, the average person, you're lucky if five or six people remember you. If you're in education, there literally would be thousands of people that are going to remember you, and I know there's going to be thousands of people that admire and remember Ms. Sutherland. And when I first met her, and I had said something that, when I looked back, and said, it didn't come out the way I said it, she looked at me. And the last time somebody looked at me was the eighth grade with Sister Mary Arlene, and that's how I felt, that when you're around Ms. Sutherland, you're disrespectful, because that is what she's about, and I enjoyed working with her and watching her in action, and she is certainly sagacious and wise, and she's going to be missed, and it's certainly going to be a hard position to fill because of her experience and wisdom.
Thank you so much.
Godspeed.
Thank you.
Moving to E, policy, no report. F, curriculum, those are just the early dismissal days as listed. Co-curricular is the DECCR, that's just the registration fee, that's it. Okay, to the addendum, we have one item on the addendum, which is a requirement that we must do from this point on, is just to memorialize our student discipline hearing that we had, and we've got the information regards to that personnel case. That's the discipline.
Yeah, we have to do what now?
We have to, we have to memorialize, we have to put a resolution through that basically says we did come to a resolve, and we had the hearing. That's basically all we've got.
Understood, thanks.
Is that correct, Mr. Board? Bush? Was that, was that your answer, or?
It's great, see how I'm answering this?
See, that's perfect, that's just perfect, just enough. That concludes my report, thank you, Mrs. Batko.
Any other comments on the agenda from the board? I'd like to open it up to the public for any comments on the agenda.
Hi, Charlotte Chilum, in the eighth floor, slide. I just have a question, I know I was at the last meeting, which was during spring break, there weren't that many people here, but I know Mrs. Batko and Mr. McEnam brought up the last day of school, and had indicated that they were thinking about going back to 180 days this year, that there was no reason to go for so long in June, that the state requirement was 180. Instead of though, deciding that that evening, Mr. Syed, you had wanted to bring that up on the agenda in May. So I wondered, I see the last days of school listed here, and they are still June 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, now they're half-days. I know we're spending 17,000, I believe it was, for busing for two more days, and now we're busing people for two more half-days. I'm just curious if there was going to be any further discussion of this.
Wasn't on the agenda?
No, it wasn't, she just specifically asked you.
Why did you address? Why did you address him?
No, I know, she just mentioned you, that I just wanted to know if you had any comments?
None besides.
Okay. Does anybody wish to comment on this topic?
I will comment that I do agree with what they're saying. It was brought up at the last meeting.
Yes.
That two of the board members had agreed with what they were saying, that it was contemplated to go back to the 180, and two of the board members had said, yes, I think we should look at the 180, and then Mr. Syak said, I think we should table this because not enough public is here. So we're trying to kind of figure out, we don't want to be a few people from the public who are here. I know we have many parents and teachers and a lot of people that we've spoken to. I yet to find anybody who wasn't in favor of 180, especially with the increased cost of going two more extra days that we technically would not have to do. In general, 182 days, I don't have a problem with, absolutely. I just have a problem with making them up at the end of the year when there were four days to be made up. Had they been made up maybe over spring break or a different time, I just think 90 degree classrooms, our teachers are wonderful, they do a fabulous job, but there's only so much you could do with my kids in a 90 degree classroom. It's, it's just really tough that time of year.
If the issue, if the issue isn't the 182 versus the 180, but just the heat, I would be open to giving Dr. Alfano the discretion during the entire month of June to decide based upon the temperature whether or not to do a half day or close school or whatever. It's run to the assumption that the last two days of June are the hottest, and that's not necessarily true.
That really hurts parents though, any working parents, these random days. I mean, that hurt people for snow days. It's very difficult then to find coverage, you know, for your job and also take care of your children. So the flexibility of that isn't really there for most people in town.
Because the other, I mean, we talk about the $17,000 for busing, we're also paying our staff regardless of whether or not they come to work. So if we're going to look at knocking these two days off, like I said, during the next round of negotiations, we really should negotiate and figure out what do we do with that if it becomes a contractual issue?
We are paying that no matter what, so we're not losing or gaining. We're paying that money no matter what.
Correct, but if we're going to go to 180, there's no reason to continue having 180.
The air conditioning for those rooms that haven't, I know a lot of special needs childrens do need air, there are air conditioners in a lot of those rooms. Those are going to be running the whole time. It's just, I'm not saying it's the two hottest days, but it is getting to that point, now you're talking, you know, right at the end of June. It just seems like this year, there's not so much a need to tack on all four days. I only bring it up again because it was brought up at the April meeting, and I know Mr. Mackinon and Mrs. Backo were like, oh, okay, and then it was put off until this meeting, so.
Madam President, if I may respond, I know Dr. Alfano, the schedule he has for the future years, he kind of solved that problem of adding days on in the year. Is that correct, Dr. Alfano? I don't have it in front of me. But the schedule for the 2011, 12 school year, talks specifically about what days to eliminate to prevent going out in June. I am reluctant at this point on May 10th to change the schedule again because of what you said, there were parents who kept asking me, you know, when is the high school graduation? They wanted to make plans, and we put those days fine than what they are. Now, I teach too, and yeah, it's hot in June, and all my students complain about it being hot, and I tell them, you know, it's all about putting in respect, it's a hell of a lot hotter in Iraq and other places I've been there, where kids go to school and it's hot. Yeah, there's always going to be those last two days of school, whether it's in June, and it could be hot as hell on June 5th, what do we do then? I understand, and for that, I totally agree with Mr. Syak, said, hey, let's come up with a policy and let's stick with it. But I think now in May, to affect the end of the school year, because especially high school parents, they were very concerned, they finally said, damn it, tell me when the last day of school is when graduation is. And now we put that and we published it, so going forward for the next year, I'm agreeable to that, whatever Dr. Alfano wants to do, but I think the answer to the schedule, which I don't know if it's on the website yet, is it 2011, 12? If you look at the verbiage there, how are we going to take days away to prevent exactly this? You know, and that's, that's.
I'm just curious, because you indicated out over spring break that you were very happy to turn it back to 180. That was the discussion that happened during spring break, so on what changed between that?
There were other considerations that Mr. Syak brought up too about, you know, the contract and we're paying and those types of things too, and we already have the schedule. You know, we're talking about this in May, and probably maybe it's my fault, we haven't discussed this late in the school year, but I think now, you know, that's my opinion. I'm only one of my members, eight hundred is on the board, so.
I'm going to say that I would prefer the 180. Is there a big problem bringing you to 180 at this point?
Well, and as you were saying, Shirley, that the teachers and maybe the parents and surely the students would like it to be the 180, but the taxpayers that are paying that extra $300,000, they want it to be, they want to get their full bang, you know, they want to get their full dollars worth. So that's, you know, a lot of my thought.
I reached out to a lot of taxpayers on this side. I kind of researched it, and I clearly even Facebooked certain people, and I just said, what is your honest opinion on this? This is really bothering, and I can't speak for everyone. Most parents, most people that I spoke to would like to see the 180.
Most people I talked to were outraged that we actually had to pay more money now for busing, for days that, you know, they did not even think would be made up. I have to say, a lot of people had no idea we were going till June 23rd. I know it's on the website. I've talked to parents who still thought we were getting out June 17. They keep saying, what makes we could be? No, there's many people who don't know the last day of school, nothing has gone home yet. It's on the website, I will give you that, but that didn't seem to register in a lot of people's minds.
I think schools across the country are trying to extend their school year, and we already have those two days. Schools are fighting to get more days in, to go year round, and I'm not suggesting we should, but we have those days, we are paying for those days as taxpayers, and we deserve a service for that money. I think $300,000 versus $17,000, that we shouldn't be throwing that $300,000 away, we should be getting something for it, for our kids.
My thought is still you're not getting very much for that, and again, it's nothing against teachers, it's just a fact, I mean.
Well, those three half days are going to be.
We have middle school students here tonight, they can vouch for how.
Those last three days would be half days, whether they're, those days are not, so they're really two full days that we're getting, not half days.
I'm just going to go with the majority of the people that I spoke with, there's not one person that said they wanted to go to the 180 to, I'm being thoroughly honest tonight, I've reached out to a lot of people.
I'm just here, again, I only bring it up because I was at the April meeting, and had it been brought up then, it was my understanding that from people's feedback at the April meeting, that it was looking, ooh, let's bump it back to 180. We've done this in the past, when we had more than two snow days. This is what has happened, it seemed like people were kind of thinking that, but it was pushed off until May, and I understood at that time, it could be pushed off till May, that there wasn't an issue with it, it's still close to graduation, but there was still time, but you wouldn't want to push it much later. Again, I pay attention to this because this is one of those issues that I've heard a lot of feedback on. I agree, I think that's a very accurate statement of what happened at the last meeting. I think people wanted to think about it, I don't know, it was pushed off, there was not a majority to move ahead with it. I think the consensus was to just wait to the next meeting. Does anybody else have any comments on this? Does anybody wish to entertain this?
I second the 180's one.
Call the board? Can you call the board? Call, can I call the board?
That's your, are you looking, someone looking to make a motion?
Is anybody?
Change the last day of school and go back to 180? I mean, calling the board, there's, are you calling the board to see if that, might as well, someone might as well just make the motion?
Mrs. Backo. Mr. DeAndrea, have we signed a contract with $17,000 for these bus companies right now?
Oh, the contract is done on a per diem basis. At this point, Don, I would notify them if we were to move in that direction, that we were, we'd be doing those last few days. I would also have to probably change my bid specs, which are coming in Wednesday, following the direction of the board from the last meeting, that we were going to establish 182 days for the bidding process, and that's what I did. Is it a major thing? No, because everything is on a per diem, but I think the board would need to do, irregardless of what you decide, if you're looking to do that, I would recommend you do a motion, someone makes the motion, and then take it from there. If there's a majority, then we'll have to adjust accordingly.
So we would save 17,000 per extra day, that?
Yes, but as some others said, you're also paying for two days in your contract that you're not getting the services that you got here.
Which we did last year too, though.
Yes, it's been.
It's been done before.
It's been done before, yes.
Yeah, you're right.
There are other years that you added on one day, it's been back and forth.
Is the bus bidding go out every year at 180 too, and this year was a mistake?
No, it's been at 180, and that's a conversation that, that occurred, and that's why we adjusted to reflect the actual calendar moving forward, after what the board discussed the last time.
Is there any concern about us establishing a past practice with the years that we've done? Because I know we haven't always done 180, but I know in the last five years, we probably have done either 180 or 181.
I don't know if that's, any of the past practices.
If your contract says 182, then you're not establishing a past practice.
Before I call the board, I just want to ask if there's anyone else in the public that want to make a comment, since, I mean, four of you came to the microphone, I don't know if anybody else had a comment.
I'll speak. Having a crush on 22 seater tires. Just, I understand the 300 versus the 17,000, but also, what about just the hourly workers? That money would be saved as well, correct? And also energy, wouldn't we save money in using less energy to have the schools open for all of the, for all of the kids?
In relation to the energy, how the building's going to be open to people every day.
But not as much electricity to be used because not all of the computers will be running, not all the water will be running, or, you know, toilets being flushed, air conditioner's being used as well. I'm sorry?
The savings would not be addressed.
I, Joe, Don, I'm going to teach you from the middle school. And Mr. Syak, to address what you just mentioned, on March 31st of 2009, the board approved the calendar for 2009, 2010. We were scheduled to go through June, we were scheduled June 23rd, our actual date was June 24th. We had one makeup day, however, we had three snow days, February 10th, 11th, and 26th. So we were scheduled 182, we worked 180, going back the year before that, 2008, May 20th, 2008, board minutes. The board approved for 2008, 2009, scheduled last day, June 19th, actual day, June 19th. We made up none, however, we missed two, Wednesday, January 28th, and Monday, March 2nd, a late snow, obviously. We were scheduled 182, we worked 180. Board minutes, March 20th, 2007, last day scheduled, Wednesday, June 18th, actual last date, Wednesday, June 18th, none made up, two missed, Thursday, January 3rd, Friday, February 22nd, scheduled 182, worked 180. I would go back further, but the board minutes on the website do not allow me to do so. I will, I will say a couple of things. Up until this year, I never came to board meetings, sat in my classroom, taught my kids, loved doing it. Taught your son, taught your son, taught your sisters, your daughters will, I know, I know you got them, you would have let them, I get it. However, they sat back here, and this was discussed several times, and Mr. Pinto, you came up here as a parent at the time, people were up in arms in the back of the room where I was sitting, writing papers, and I just chuckled and said, you know, technically, the administration's saying what is true, we are, we are scheduled for 182. I knew without doing any of this research, that it was always 180, even though there had been people at the table who have said, it's always been 182, one year we did 181, which is on the video stream unfortunately at the time. It's not the case. And it, and it was just kind of like, you know what, it is what it is, guys, just drop it. But then a couple of meetings ago, $17,000, $17,000, and the 150 or the 300, that's paid no matter what. I do, and we talked last time at the end of last thing, you brought up a great point, like, you know, we need to settle it, you're right, and it should be done, Mr. Syak, what you said last time was tremendous. But that doesn't affect right now. The 150 or the 300, that's getting paid no matter what, that's not savings or, or, or lost money. And I certainly disagree as a guy who just has a single apartment and run an air conditioner, I'm sorry, all those rooms will not be air conditioned the day everybody's out, the custodians are only doing certain rooms, and I know what my air conditioner is when I say one day in June. I think there is a serious value saved between lights and water and air conditioning and everything that just finally you said behind me. Okay? So again, I, you know, it happened over spring break when this all started, and with the holidays, I thought of the Jewish holiday that was taking place, there was, why is this year different than all others? Why is this year different than all others? And if it's whatever the purpose is, or whatever the cause was, and this year it had to be 182, it's a heck of a year, and it's a heck of a price, $17,000 plus more, good point, to make that stand this year.
What's your point, Joe?
That's my point. Okay, my point is, and by the way, the nine of you up here, I give, I know, I give you all the credit in the world, because you know what?
I don't like what you imply.
Okay, well, let me, let me clear, let me clear that up, Mr. Mackinon, let me, let me clear that up. I want to clear that up, because I should have said that upfront, I did.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay? The nine of you, I give you all the respect in the world, because why you would do it, I don't know. Okay? I live in a town where two people ran for three board seats, I ain't around either. I wasn't going for that, so I give you all the credit in the world. What I will tell you is this, Mr. Mackinon, this is what you brought to me, okay? No, because I can see in your eyes, I apologize if I misstated myself, because what you get is the information that you get. You guys have day jobs and families and lives, and then you come here in the evening, and a lot of the stuff that you get, okay, you have to take on faith, and one of the things that was stated over and over again was, it's always 182, one year we went to 181. So I don't fault you for thinking that that was the norm, it's not the norm. And if that's a problem, if something this small is a problem, then I will say this, think about it in the future, what else are you being told that may or may not be what it should be? That's all I'm saying, okay? It does bother me. I sit back there and I, as just an individual who sat in my classroom for nine years and never came to anything, said, that's not right, I knew, and yet people who are in charge of this were selling it month after month and meeting after meeting that no, it wasn't. And that's the only reason why I did this research. So absolutely no disrespect intended to any of the non of you, okay? You can only go by what you're given, but I would say is be a little more aware of what you'll be given in the future.
And now, now, let me explain.
Sure.
I think you should be a little more aware. Everything you said, I noticed you talked about going 180, 180, you didn't say the kids run to school 180 this year, you said, we worked 180, we worked 180.
I apologize to the kids.
So I understand when that's come from. Secondly, if the board decides to change this and the kids do 180 days, I'm willing to throw in two extra days for professional development to meet the 182. Is that okay?
What you need to do.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mackinon.
Madam President, I make a motion, we go with the 182 and we end the discussion.
Second.
Mrs. Backo, we don't need that motion because that's already established.
And I just want, is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak before we vote? Okay, I'll stay in motion, please, hold the portion.
Oh, good.
Does anybody want to make the motion for the 180?
I'll make the motion to go the 180. I'll second it.
I just like to read, motion to change for students to 180 days, and I guess at the next meeting, Doc, we'll approve the last day of school.
I have, I have, if it goes to 180, I have the resolution, so we can do it now. Just hold the board, find out if they want.
Well, if you have the resolution and want to read the resolution.
The resolution is, the board of education is requesting to approve the following dates of the school year 10 to 11, and this is based on 180 days. Promotion ceremony would be Monday, the 20th, for the middle school. High school graduation would be the 21st, which is a Tuesday. Last day for students would be the 21st, and the last day for teachers would be the 22nd. I would like to comment just on what Mr. O'Donnell said. I would hope that the board members, the implication was, is that I sort of told you that we went 182 days, I think we've always had that discussion in closed session, and I've always left it up to the board, if you want to do 180 or you want to do 181 and you want to do 182. And in all due respect, I don't think I do anything to try to trick you or to try to lie to you. I am sort of hurt by what was said, because I certainly try to be as honest as I can and upfront, and you guys know you get a ton of stuff every Friday, and this was discussed very clearly whether or not we go 180 or 182. And I always will respect the decision of the board like I would do in this case. So I just want to clear the record, so that you guys understand I would never do anything to certainly confuse you or try to make it, I try to make it crystal clear.
In my mind, Dr. Alfano, your record is the absolute best.
And I, and I apologize, but I certainly will do whatever the board would like to do, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? Uh, it's just that I remember my kids move to school, so I'm going to say like maybe eight years ago, we did go the one eighty-two, because I remember.
And we got one eighty-one.
And I remember discussing that with you.
And you don't forget too, there was a tendency to end the school year earlier while construction was going on, and that was the motivation. So, Madam, Madam President, we have a motion on our table, I suggest we take a roll call, vote and be done with it.
Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Yes, what?
This is to go to one eighty?
Yes, to change the calendar to one eighty.
Is that the only thing we're voting?
Yes.
Okay. Did you ever vote on the other one, Joe?
No, we didn't do it. So, so we're all clear. Yes is an indication that you like to move the calendar to the one eighty. Mr. Bishab.
No.
Mrs. Bruno Ricculli.
No.
Mr. Syak.
No.
Mrs. De Pinta.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp.
No.
Mr. McEnam.
I had an open mind, but I'm voting no now.
And Mrs. Bakka.
Yes.
Motion does not pass. Press on.
Motion to approve superintendent's report? Second.
I'm sorry, we move the first, I apologize. Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mr. Bishab.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ricculli.
Question, this, this is still with the.
Superintendent's report, aren't we?
Yes.
It stays with it.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. De Pinta.
Yes.
And Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp.
Yes.
Mr. McEnam.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bakka.
Yes.
And now, is there a discussion? Okay, I'll open up the.
Actually, just one item before our discussion, sorry about that. Uh, the principals had contacted me regarding beginning negotiations, and we are ongoing negotiations with supervisors. I just wanted to know if I'm still going to be in charge of those committees, if you're going to be reworking the committees, so I know whether I should commence negotiations with them or hold off. I put them on hold temporarily pending this meeting.
My opinion agreed with the people that are in negotiations, who continue negotiations on any contract.
Then I will commence negotiations. Thank you.
I'll open up the public for any questions or comments on anything. And those of the portion. Sorry.
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 Allison Hornbeck, um, seven foot drive, just a couple of points. Um, first off, I'd like to congratulate all the elected board members. Um, I do give you a lot of credit, um, and thank you for, for serving our community. Um, the second thing is, unfortunately, Mr. Limbo is not with us any longer, but if anybody sees him, please can, you know, thank him for me, because he was our Eisenhower PTO liaison from the board. Um, he did come to our meetings, and it was much appreciated, um, so I would like to thank him for that publicly. And then I would also like to open it up to any, anybody else on the board that would like to come and be our board liaison, you know, for, for Eisenhower. Um, we can certainly send you what the calendar is for those meetings. Um, and then also, you know, congratulations on the budget, what a, you know, what a great job, and, um, you know, it's my understanding that there are, there, there's money there for some elementary school teachers, so I just want you guys to keep in mind the, the population in Eisenhower, and that when, when you look, you know, to, to move those teachers, that, you know, Eisenhower definitely gets a, you know, a teacher and we get a good look, because as of right now, I understand it's a hundred and forty, uh, kindergarten students so far. And, you know, registration is enclosed, you know, our, our population is increasing, we do need that teacher, so I want you guys, you know, just to bring that aware, because, you know, you know, if you're aware, you'll, you'll hopefully make the right decision, so, that's, you know, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Mrs. Bakka. Uh, for the parents here, it was a good point brought up about Eisenhower, because there is a lot of construction over there. What I would recommend to the public in general, is start attending these Sereville meetings, because the O'Neill properties are going to give the district nineteen million dollars for the increased enrollment that's going to come out of the National Lit properties. Uh, if you do the calculations with over two thousand homes that are going to be built there, and the amount of rooms that are going to be in certain buildings and all that, that's been published, that's not going to cover anything. So, what I would recommend is that, as a, the public, to attend these meetings, to put your voice out there, maybe with O'Neill, with how they're trying to do a property tax assessment on these properties, a one-time fee, or the amount of money that they want to pay to the district, I think you, as, not only me, but everyone should get involved and start making some noise about, because it's going to affect everyone in this town.
Mr. Bishab, I just want to, one thing, I know you've been an advocate of this, and I applaud you for that, but the latest thing that the planning board was reading about O'Neill properties is that the nineteen million dollars that's earmarked for the schools, it's not going to come to the school leadership, but go to the council, and they'll determine how it's going out for the school board, but that's the latest, so, just thought you might enjoy that.
Are they still putting, Mr. McEnam, you opened this up, and you're on the planning board, are they still playing a little game of not fair tax assessment for the properties? Like, I have my property assessed at a certain value, you, everyone sitting at this table, and are they going to finagle a, and I'll use the word finagle. Because I think it's a proper term to use.
I understand that word.
A one-time-only type of assessment?
I don't know, that's beyond my scope, uh, on the planning board, or the board event, so I, I don't know. But I could recommend that you attend another meeting and ask them questions.
It, it was actually asked at the council meeting once before, so it is, it is, well, the public is aware of it, and it has been questioned at the council. Any other questions from the public?
I'm sorry, uh, Mrs. Bakka, I, and I realize you probably have to bring it back to the public, but I need to ask him, because I looked for it, and I couldn't exactly find it, what our plan is for next year for eleven, twelve, um, with the snow makeup days. Because I know we were talking about the, the, um, when we were speaking with PIP about it, we were discussing going, whether or not, um, we would do the makeup days in February, like maybe add an extra day for President's Weekend, and pull it away if, if necessary, the same thing with maybe, um, Easter week. So, do you, I, I apologize for not bringing this to you sooner, but do you remember?
It, it's, it's similar to what we have now, but I think what, the, the calendar is very clear about how we make the days up. Next year, remember, we're getting out, I believe it's the fifteenth. So, there, it is very early, because it just, all the holidays fall on weekends. So, next year, it's really not going to be that major an issue, unless we wind up with tons of snow. The issue, the issue always is, is do we want to do one eighty or one eighty-two? That's really the big issue here. And I think when January and February rolls around, before we even get into this, we have to set our goal, like we're saying what Mr. Syak said, and said, what do we want to do? Do we want to do one eighty-two, or do we want to do one eighty? Now, obviously, if we get no snow, we're going to do one eighty-two, because the calendar has a hundred and eighty-two days in it. And right now, usually the way we do it is we eat the days up at the end of the year. We usually, if we do two days, we usually make them up at the end of the year, whether it be one, two days, or whatever. This year, because it's been so, there was so much snow, that we, there were more days at the end.
Well, I, I think what was said at, um, the PIG meeting was, it would have been maybe more advantageous to use those days over spring break or Easter Monday with testing coming up. Perhaps the children may have gotten more out of it than to prepare for testing, but it got too late.
Right, but the problem is, Mr. Pinto, you're going to get fifty percent of the people that are going to want the days to be ended at the end of the year, and fifty percent of the people that are going to want the days to be deducted from the, uh, spring break. I don't believe, I've been here eleven years, we have not taken any days off the spring break when I've been here. Uh, that's just me, I don't know back when, whether or not we took any days off, but I know for a fact, we didn't take any off the spring break.
No, and I don't remember.
And, 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 and Mr. O'Donnell is accurate in saying that most of the time we do one eighty, that I will tell, that I will say. I think in the last four or five years, we did a one eighty-one, because we only had one snow day. But the bottom line is, is that it always comes up to a decision of whether or not we, as a group, want to do one eighty-two or one eighty.
But taking away the one eighty or the one eighty-two, and knowing the fifty percent want this and the fifty percent want that, if it is a board decision, could it be looked at, and what is more advantageous for the students in the classroom?
Well, well, I think we have to make that decision early in the, in, in the process. And you certainly could say, you know, obviously in February, you could make that decision, when you know, you know, I mean, mostly your snow comes in January. That's when a, a, a ton of your snow comes before the February break. And, uh, certainly, uh, we could take a good look at that and see what happens next year. But hopefully next year, we don't get that much snow. If you don't get that much snow, it doesn't become really an issue.
So, I, I think that we need to maybe come back next week, because I, I'm still confused whether or not we have four day, whether or not we have Friday and Monday of President's Weekend, if we have.
No, we don't, we do not. We have a regular calendar next year. We have no four-day weekends, we took that away.
Right, because of the ten-month.
Correct, we took all that away, we're doing a straight one hundred and eighty-two days, period. And then, basically, the calendar is very clear. Uh, out to three days, we will make the days up at the end of the year, if we go more than three days, we will probably go into the spring break. So, it's still going to bring you very early in the year anyway next year, because, remember, even if we did five, it would be out the twenty-second. Because the, the, next year, we purposely did that, if you recall, to make the calendar as early as possible next year. So, we pulled out a lot of days out of the calendar, and we consolidated a lot of the days, because there just isn't that many, uh, holidays during the year next year. So, right now, if everything goes well, we'll get out June fifteen next year. Which is very long. We've never gotten out June fifteen.
I have it up right now in front of me. The way it's stated is, the above calendar does not allow for snow days. If schools are closed for any reason, then some of the days may be made up at the end of the school year, or on January sixteenth, February twentieth, April ten, uh, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, two thousand twelve. Makeup days will impact, will impact the date of graduation. In the event the state legislature and the governor mandate state holidays which are not listed on the above calendar, these days would be celebrated and added to the makeup days.
So, so what, thank you. Uh, what, what we're saying there is, is that it may be, so it's a board decision. When that time comes, look at by the February meeting, which I believe, I don't have it in front of me, it's probably like the twentieth, you can make a decision right then and there of how far you want to go. And it says, may be made up, and that we purposely did that, so it gives us flexibility. Understand, there's a lot of districts that are bound by their last day of school because they have graduation, and they get caught into that, and they get forced into taking days their spring break or Saturdays or whatever, because they have to do a certain amount of days. By giving the flexibility of doing it the way we've done it, now understand one thing, this is the way it's been done forever. I'm not saying it's right, but this is the way it's been done in Sereville forever.
Just as a comment looking forward, maybe what we want to do, and I don't, I don't think I want to touch the upcoming calendar, but maybe when we look and develop future calendars, we look at that point, knowing that we want to go one eighty-two, and knowing that if more than three snow days occur, we'll start taking it off somewheres else. Maybe we build a calendar around one eighty-five, and then if we don't have the snow days, you back it back to the one eighty-two. Because when you go to the public and say, we're backing it off, you got a much better shot, and you don't need tech hacking or not.
You were presented a calendar like that, and there was a lot of contractual issues that we pulled away from that. As if you recall, I had two separate calendars.
But I don't recall it being defined the way I.
Yes, it was defined one eighty-five, and as a result, it was a contractual issue, we decided not to get into that issue, and we backed off and went back to the one eighty-two. And I agree with you, I mean, that would be an easier thing to do, and then you could just, you know, uh, pull off, and it was very definitive, it was very set, you know? If we take the three snow days, this is what happens. We decided not to do that, because we were going to get into some contractual squabbles, and we decided not to do that, and go back to the old way.
Can I just, what was the rationale when, did you originally have a four-day weekend as President's Day, and you went to three, what was the rationale for changing?
What we did was exactly what Mr. Syak was talking about, is that we had a four-day weekend for the February break, and we had four-day weekend for the May break, Memorial Day. And we were, we were building those days into the calendar as snow days, in case if we had snow days. But due to contractual reasons, we decided not to do that, because you're going to get the twelve-month people who are going to get extra days. If you recall, that was the issue, and we didn't, we didn't, we didn't argue about that, but that came up, and we weren't sure we wanted to do that. So, we said, rather than, you know, getting into contractual issues, let's go back to the old way, and then we'll hopefully next year, make a decision in February and be very clear about it. Because February gives you plenty of time. And if you don't know about the February meeting, you'll have a pretty good idea of how many days are being used.
Okay, did we reach this to that?
The horse is dead. Open the horse.
Before we adjourn, uh, we're going to go into closed session, do, do you have an estimate of the time?
Um, we would like to be out by between eight-thirty and nine o'clock.
So, there, there may be action or, or not at that time, so we will come back into public if you wish to wait, but.
Madam President, if I may, I have a statement which I prepared and I would like to share. Okay? And I want to do this in honor of Special Education Week, which runs from day eight to day fourteen. And I think it's a great opportunity to reflect on the themes of promise, personal best, and commitment. Um, there are a lot of stakeholders that really make things, um, go very well in the Special Education Department, and I would like to publicly thank all of those people. Um, first, I would like to publicly thank the parents of our special education students. Um, their lives may be filled with challenges they had never anticipated, and yet they graciously support and encourage the child they have, um, one who may bring many more complexities into their lives. I would like to publicly thank the amazing and dedicated special education teachers, paraprofessionals, therapists, child study team members, support staff and administrators, who work diligently each day to meet the unique educational needs of each child, so that they can meet their goals and be all that they can be. I want to publicly thank the community at large for expanding cultural and recreational opportunities for our students. Local businesses have provided opportunities for many of our students, and we are grateful for the collaboration in preparing these students for successful lives after high school. And finally, I would like to publicly thank the board, who has supported every special education initiative, and have consistently and generously supported meeting the needs of our special education students, so that they can achieve their personal best. While you may think what you will about Hillary Rodham Clinton, it does indeed take a village to raise a child. And during Special Education Week, I suggest celebrating the community of Sereville for collectively doing an outstanding job in making this a community that is a kind, nurturing, and encouraging place for all of its children.
Mrs. Bakka, just a, a comment on the special ed resolution. Uh, Mr. McEnam, Dr. Alfanon, Ms. Sublin, and I all attended the Hall of Fame recognition dinner for our graduates, and one of the inductees spoke and was very, very proud of the fact that she was a special education student from Sereville, and she's gone on to do exceptionally well. And I just want to give credit to the special education program, and especially the people who have been a part of that program for a long time, such as yourself, Mrs., uh, Ms. Gordon, uh, and God rest her soul, Nancy Nowitzki. Thank you.
Need a motion first?
Make the motion go on close, second.
Motion by Mr. McEnam, second by Mr. Bishab. Yeah, I'm going to wait. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one, deal nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this body, public body, of the opinion that certain circumstances does not exist, now therefore be reserved by the Board of Education, by O'Seale County, Minnesota, six days in New Jersey, and follow. The public shall be excluded from discussion of, in the action upon the herein after specified subject matter, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Personnel, interview of assistant superintendents, negotiations, SCA contract. It anticipated this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Board may reconvene after executive?
Correct.
Is that what?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Do we need to give the public a time? We need to give the public a time now.
8:30 or nothing?
8:30, okay.
Between 8:30 and nothing. Board may reconvene after executive to take action Mr. Balka. Mr. Bishaba.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ricculli.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. De Pinta.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. McEnamore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Thank you.